Order it this time?
Just come here.
You can say it.
Let me throw a short time.
All right. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Select Board, respective town staff and those who are attending this evening and those watching at home. Welcome to the November 15th, 2021 Exeter Select Board meeting. I'll start by introducing the board. Selectwoman Rountriolif will be a little tardy this evening, but she'll be here. To my right, Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
To my left, the Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good evening.
Good evening. Selectman Daryl Brown, good evening.
Good evening.
Our Town Manager, Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
And our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening Joanna. And my name is Nico Papakostindis. Again, good evening to everybody. We'll jump right into public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with comment. We do ask, though, if your comment is relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait till that agenda item comes up, but now pause and open up for public comment. If you would, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Darius Thompson, 15 Drinkwater Road, speaking as a resident of Exeter only.
Good evening.
I have two questions. One is, a couple of years ago, we put additional money into the sidewalk fund to actually potentially maybe have sidewalks put down on Drinkwater Road. We have an increased number of young families in that neighborhood, so the current sidewalks comes down from High Street and it stops right at the first intersection of where it goes, like the little Prentice Way, whatever. Wondering if we could actually have the Select Board recommend to the sidewalk committee to actually put a sidewalk in, going all the way down to the end of Prentice Way. That way, some of the kids no longer have to walk in the street when they're getting dropped off from the bus. The buses don't have to stop twice. Kids that are walking up and down that road can actually have a sidewalk to walk on. There's a lot of walkers. In that specific neighborhood, we're talking a, it's not a long area to put in a sidewalk, so I was wondering if that could be considered as we look at the funding for next year in capital projects. The second question pertains to the seven-year contract for the Town Manager. I know that the contract for Russ was done such that you would be able to have his kids continue to finish school here and to, you know, hold the Town Manager here in the town. We're coming up with two years to go on that contract, and I know that there was a lot of issues with the town. They voted on a warrant article that they would recommend that they need to have any multi-year contract for the Town Manager. It had to be approved by the majority of the town. The Select Board at the time basically voted three to two, had the contract, has a supermajority, makes it very difficult to end that contract. So, as a resident, I'm asking you, the Select Board, will you go back to the way things are, not renew that contract, and have the Town Manager be returned to employee at will? This is a direct question.
Okay. So, I'll start with the first question. Mr. Dean, I know we have the DPW Director Perry scheduled for our next meeting. Perhaps we can discuss the sidewalk plan in general with her at that time. I know that the Budget Committee recently went through that with her at the BRC meeting, but certainly we can put that on the agenda.
Right.
Mr. Thompson, I believe she will be scheduled for the next meeting.
Okay, super.
So, if I understood your second question correctly, the seven-year contract that was voted on by the Select Board at the time,
Correct.
and I believe there's only one Select Board member here that was part of that Select Board, voted three to two to award the Town Manager a seven-year contract.
Mm-hmm.
And you're asking the Select Board to consider, at the end of the two years that are remaining, to negotiate-
Yeah, to not have any more guaranteed contract, because at that point in time, the issue for the contract was to have his kids go to school here and ensure that they would be finishing school. That was what I understood was in the press and publicly known. So, my question is, again, this guaranteed contract makes it very difficult to end that contract ahead of time, so I'm asking to reconsider as you're looking at that. I think Russ is doing a great job. That's wonderful, but anybody having a guaranteed contract makes it very difficult if something should arise, should you need to end that contract. So, I'm asking, as a representative for me, to not renew that contract and go back to an employee at will.
So, I'd like to say a couple of things about the contract, which is public record. Though it's a guarantee in years, there are provisions on both sides should the Town Manager wish to leave or if the Select Board looked to ask him to leave. So, it's not like it's a, you know, guaranteed 100%. There are provisions for both sides. I will speak from my experience in my professional life, working with almost 350 municipalities, that it is most uncommon for a municipality not to at least give some sort of a contract that has a couple of years. It varies in size of the town. It varies in size of the government. Typically, on an average, a Town Manager's contract is three to five years. Very, very rarely will you see a Town Manager, at a town this size with this type of government, have a rolling contract. And it's rare because it's hard to keep people. It's hard to keep good people, and most Town Managers right now can get a multi-year contract. I would agree with you that seven years is unorthodox. I will add that when Exeter awarded the Town Manager a seven-year contract, Durham immediately gave their Town Manager a nine-year contract. So, you know, I think certainly the Select Board would take yours and anybody's requests under consideration, but I think when you're negotiating a contract, you have to look at a bigger picture. Since that contract was negotiated, a lot of Town Managers are retiring, and I can tell you, it's not a problem exclusive to New Hampshire, Massachusetts, or New England. It's very hard to find good Town Managers. So, I guess the best way to answer your question is, you know, everything is under consideration when you're negotiating any contract, but I think to revert back to a rolling one-year deal would not be in the town of Exeter's best interest.
And again, I understand those things, but prior to Russ being here, there was no guaranteed contract. There was no multi-year contract. Those didn't exist. George Olson was the Town Manager for many years, year to year. No issues. I understand there's a war on talent and all those things that we're looking for and hard to find good people, but my point is that having a contract structured the way this contract is, when you read it, it's very difficult. You have to have a supermajority and/or there are other provisions that you have to wind up paying a year's salary or other things. So, it seems that it was written one-sided, and it's great that he had a guaranteed contract, because if anyone has a contract for that period of time to put those provisions, that's wonderful, but in the best interests of the town, to make certain that we don't have a multi-year contract where we're put at a disadvantage, where it becomes disadvantageous should something need to occur or that you need to replace someone. And the second part of it is, any subsequent manager, any assistant manager, any other position at that level should not have a multi-year contract without the consent of the town. Let us approve it. You can make the recommendations, but let us approve it, or disprove it, or disapprove it. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your thoughts.
Yep.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Chair, a question. Is there a sidewalk committee?
No.
Mr. Dean, I'm not aware of a sidewalk committee, but I think maybe-
So, just briefly, Department of Public Works has a sidewalk program that they put together, and we have roughly $180,000, give or take, in a capital reserve fund for sidewalk improvements. So, we've been talking at DPW for, you know, a little bit of time now about what their plans are to utilize those funds, so that could be something that Ms. Perry could connect with the board next week on and give you an update as to their thoughts. I know they were thinking and sort of angling toward Linden Street as the main project because there was some federal funding that was possibly going to be involved in that, but as that has not materialized, they have sort of shifted gears. So, we can find out what they're thinking next week when Jennifer's in.
Terrific. We'll look forward to that. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for our clerk to read. So, I'll turn it over to you, Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a proclamation to shop small. Whereas the municipality of the town of Exeter celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of small business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so. Two. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas the town of Exeter supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, recognize November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday, and encourage residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, dated this 15th day of November 2021.
Great. Thank you very much. And good evening, Selectwoman Rountriolif. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Exeter Select Board. Regular meeting minutes of November 1st, 2021. I would first ask the board if there are any corrections, revisions, or amendments to the minutes.
Nope.
And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of November 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0. And we do not have any appointments this evening. We'll jump right into our discussion action items, and I would ask the board to indulge a request I have to move the tree ordinance third reading up to the first discussion item. We have many members of the tree committee and other folks who worked very hard on the ordinance here in the attendance, and I'd like to, if the board is okay with that, start with that third reading and take more public comment and then take a vote. Great. So, seeing no opposition, we will move that up to the first discussion item. This is the third and final reading of the tree ordinance, and I would ask for a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0, and I will open it up to the public if there's any public comment relative to the tree ordinance.
Eileen Flockhart. The last time we presented, there were two small changes, one that had to do with being sure that Warden represented Tree Warden in the wording and to eliminate the funding portion, which is not appropriate for an ordinance. Beyond that, we didn't see any other changes that needed to be made, so I guess we're looking to you folks to see if you have any other recommendations.
Okay, great. Thank you, Eileen. Any other members of the public have any comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Bring it back to the board. Any of the board members have any final revisions, edits, suggestions?
I do. The Board of Selectmen should be probably changed to Select Board.
Good catch.
I don't think it appears anywhere else, but maybe we should just say that if there are any other referrals to us, it should be Select Board.
Agreed. I didn't see any others. Selectwoman Cowan?
No, I didn't. I caught that, but I didn't see anything else, and I want to thank the committee for all the work they did. A very comprehensive ordinance that I think will do a lot of good for the town.
Agreed. Any other comment from the board?
No, I would just echo Selectwoman Gilman's thanks and my own. I will add my own. This is really exciting and great.
Then, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the Town of Exeter Chapter 10 tree ordinance with the revision of correcting the reference to the Exeter Board of Selectmen to the Exeter Select Board.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just as a note that we will plan on making this Chapter 23 of our town ordinances, and it will stand alone. I know in the packet you had, it was XX, it hadn't been codified in a complete way yet, but we will be making this Chapter 23 pending your adoption.
Okay. Should I modify my motion?
Yeah, you said Chapter 10.
Because that's what this says.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So, I will amend the motion-
I will amend my motion to reference Chapter 23 instead of-
That's right. With the Exeter Select Board.
With the-
Yep.
Yes.
And Selectman Brown?
I think it was me. I will resecond that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Adjustments need to be made to all of these sections. It says XX needs to say 23.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, we'll do that. The codification copy that goes on file with the Town Clerk, we'll take care of that.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank all of you.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is Swayze Parkway. We've invited the Swayze Park trustees to attend with us, and we have a majority of the trustees here this evening. So, Mr. Chair, I'll let you call your meeting to order.
Thank you, yes. I'll open up the Swayze Parkway trustee meeting at 7:16. To my right is Vice Chair, Darius Thompson. Trustee Dave Short cannot make it tonight, and I am Duane Staples Chair.
Great. Good evening. Thank you both for coming this evening. We met, I believe, sometime late in the summer. The trustees came to join the Select Board, and we talked about various issues or initiatives within the Parkway. The roadway itself was still closed at that time. We discussed the fact that, given the emergency order had been lifted, we needed to come up with a way to safely reopen it legally, because the Select Board at that time did not have any legal authority to keep it completely closed. We talked about safety issues extensively, and that's ultimately where it led the board to open it for only one way, to try to ensure as much safety for the public and pedestrians, bikers, et cetera, while legally reopening the road, given the lack of authority to keep it completely closed. We also talked about having you come back sometime in the fall, which is why we invited you this evening, to continue the discussion about Swayze Park in general, but more specifically about the roadway in general. Ever since the Select Board voted to completely close the road due to the emergency order of COVID back in April of 2020, we've received a lot of correspondence, both pros and cons, of keeping the roadway closed. We've had people come since we opened in June for public meetings. We've had folks come for public comment to talk about keeping the road closed, some folks wanting to keep it open, and we just wanted to keep that discussion ongoing. I believe that there was an appetite from at least some of the board members to consider perhaps having a warrant article on the ballot this March concerning the roadway. You know, whether it was to keep it open, whether it was to close it, keep it open one way, or come up with something, I believe that there were enough Select Board members and enough members of the public warranted having you come back for a conversation. So, I just wanted to start with that introduction, get some thoughts from you. I know you've probably met many times since we last met together. I don't know if any of this has come up in conversation, and also like to get some public input this evening and continue this conversation.
We have met. We really haven't discussed the road closure or the opening. I can tell you that we have had some sidewalks down there. I've been down there, meeting with contractors and other people in the Parkway. Certainly, my feeling is that the Parkway is being used a little bit more by our senior members. The one-way seems to have alleviated a lot of the speeding concerns that have been expressed over the years. I think personally it's been successful. People are still walking in the road. There's still young people down there biking, skateboarding. So, I personally, again, I think it was a good move. I think it was a good compromise on everybody's part to have that open one-way. I would also ask, if there is a movement to close the road, how does that affect the status with this LWCF status that the Parkway seems to be under?
And that's a good question.
Very good question. I think our Director of Parks and Rec can answer that question decisively, other than I can make a guess, but I don't want to.
Mr. Chair, could you explain LWCF?
I could take a stab at it, but I think our Assistant Town Manager in the background can give a better explanation than I can, if you don't mind, Melissa.
Good evening, Melissa Roy, Assistant Town Manager, HR Director. LWCF is the Land Water Conservation Fund. It is a federal program that supports communities, states, and municipalities for funding to purchase and develop parkland. In return, the property that's either purchased or developed must stay as parkland in perpetuity. In 1993, I was able to get the paperwork. It looks like in, excuse me, in 1992, the town of Exeter submitted for LWCF funding to help with the Brickyard Park renovation. At that time, they called West End Park. As part of that project, they had a kiosk request to be put into Swayze Park, and that is what ended up putting the Parkway into LWCF discretion. And at the time, the project cost was for $56,000, and the LWCF grant was for $28,000. And I'm happy to answer more questions, but-
So, it's unlikely that making the road, closing the road, would jeopardize the LWCF?
No. Actually, they would probably really like it, but that is not what, that's not my suggestion. I'm just saying, no, the LWCF does not have, it would not have an opinion as to whether or not the roadway needed to be kept open or closed. What LWCF provides is potential funding in the future if renovations at the Parkway needed to happen, but it also requires that that property stay a park in perpetuity.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Well, I just, again, in meeting with the Water Department about the sewer project that's going in there, they told me that the road would probably need to be closed for a period of time as they do this new siphon. When I talked with Greg Vison, the director, he said that we needed to tell the state under this LWCF. So, I'm a little confused as to why, again- So I'm a little confused as to why, again, we have to tell the state, tell the LWCF because this is a sewer project and the road's going to be closed.
Yep, I can explain that. So what Greg, because Greg and I actually talked about this. What Greg is talking about is because a section of the park would be having to be fenced off for the sewer project, we have to notify the state anytime the park is shut, any part of the park is shut down from complete access. It wouldn't be in violation because the other end of the park would be accessible, but he is running it by the state to make sure that there isn't any issues with it. So that is what he's talking about. Eric, I can't remember Eric's last name. I apologize. He's our contact at the state with the LWCF project. But it, yeah, he is correct. It wasn't until, and I apologize for not remembering, that Greg found out that the Parkway was even in LWCF. I think there was something missed for a few years. But since we have figured that out, we're trying to do everything the right way.
Can the Parkway ever come out of the LWCF?
Yep, the Parkway can come out of LWCF property if we petition the state and the LWCF program and then provide an equal piece of property in value. And it doesn't necessarily mean monetary value. An equal piece of property in value in regards to the park. And then the state would review that and determine whether or not that was acceptable, as an acceptable swap. So yes, it is a possibility. I will be honest, I don't think that it happens too often, but it most certainly is something that we can look into if that's what you would like.
So I have just a straightforward question. We received funding, $56,000 in funding? Or did we not receive any funding at all or a matching of $28,000?
It was a match of $28,000 that the town received in 1993. And I believe the majority of that funding went to, and when the original application was put in, the majority of the funding went to the renovation at Brickyard Park to put the ball fields in. I think originally, Russ, they had two baseball softball fields, I believe.
Yes.
And then eventually, they were turned to multipurpose fields. But there was a small amount of money designated to, I believe it was a kiosk at Swayze Parkway. So it was a smaller amount of money. But the way LWCF works is it's a matching program, so it's a 50% matching program. So the project total is 56. We were approved for $28,000 in 1993.
Okay, so again, I'm going to follow the money.
Sure.
If there was money appropriated for a kiosk, and help me if I'm wrong here, is there a kiosk anywhere in Swayze Park? So again, I'm asking the question, where is the funding for the kiosk? That was supposed to be part of this matching funds that the town received. And there's no kiosk, so there should be money set aside somewhere, that amount, for a kiosk.
Right, so we have to look that up. I will be honest, Greg and I don't have that information. It wasn't passed down to us, so we are going to have to review that. It was, it just wasn't, we were both not here at the time, so I'm not quite sure. I don't know.
Yeah, so, and I kind of figured this would come up. This is an old grant. It is like, has been stated already, this is 1993, 1994 time window and predates any of us here. We didn't have any information about the information kiosk and what happened to it, why it didn't get put in, et cetera. I'm not sure. There could be some records from that time that would give hints of that. But our books are audited every year. And I mean, that's, that ship has sailed long ago in terms of just money that was, you know, committed to the town. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have any record of that unless somebody knew a reason why the information kiosk never materialized. But again, that's well before our time, so we haven't been able to figure it out.
So what you're saying is that we received matching funds for a kiosk to be built. It was never built. The funds have gone nowhere. We don't know where. And there's no accounting for it?
Yeah, they could have been put into Brickyard Park for all we know. Florence has her hand up. Maybe she knows.
Yes.
When I was a park trustee, it was our understanding.
Hi, Florence Rutter is a former Swayze Park trustee. It was my understanding, because this topic did come up, that they ran out of funds, that the money was actually used at the Brickyard Field. So they ran out. That's what I was told.
So were the funds allocated for both Brickyard Park and Swayze Park? Or was it just for the kiosk?
The project scope, if I read it on the Land and Water Conservation Fund project agreement, it says the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire will develop two ball fields and parking at West End Park, which is Brickyard, an information kiosk in Swayze Parkway, entrance sign and parking lot at Oakland Town Forest and trail signs. And then the total cost is, as Melissa pointed out, is $56,000 with $28,000 to be a match from the town. So 56 total, 28 grant, 28 town.
So it's not like $56,000 went missing and nothing got done, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It was, if Florence is correct and it was used to develop Brickyard Park, then that's as good a guess as anyone would have.
Does that help answer your question, Mr. Thompson?
It does, but it would like, it might be nice to see it on the books and say that the funds were received. This is where it went, you know, that part. I understand, I mean, I trust what people are saying, but trust and verify if that's the case. And the other part of the question is that the funds were never, the kiosk was never built. And the funds were used for other locations under this designation. This Swayze Park's still under this LWCF, even though we never received any funds for of the improvements that were made as part of this program? Or are we part of that because we're a park?
I think we're, go ahead.
Russ and I actually had this conversation about an hour ago. And both of us said that we're going to look into it with the state, with Greg. I just don't have that answer right at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Staples, does this satisfy your question?
Yeah. I just would like to know, so as a Board of Trustees, we voted two years ago to, or maybe it was a year ago, I'd have to look back in the minutes, to spend $2,500 to put an informational kiosk down there. So, and again, this is how this all came up because I asked some questions and was told, well, wait a minute. There was money that was supposed to be set aside for this. So can we move forward with this informational kiosk as a Board of Trustees? I don't understand why we can't do that. If we voted to spend up to $2,500 for an informational kiosk down there as a Board of Trustees, can or can't we do that?
And is that you delusing funds from the trust?
Yes.
Who?
I would.
I would.
I mean, I would say you could, right?
Yeah, I think, again, we've had this conversation before where the board is, the Select Board, are the ones who are overseeing the trust. If the board was amenable to doing that project, then I think it could be done.
So we still have to come back to the Board of Selectmen to?
So if that's what you have voted to recommend, you come back to the Select Board, correct? For us to consider using $2,500 from the trust?
Well, again, my understanding is we have two funds, correct? We have the trust and then we have another fund from the fees. So if we use, maybe I, maybe I spoke too soon. I don't know, as we actually said, it was going to come from the trust. But if it came from the other fund, can, do we have to still come back to the Board of Selectmen?
I don't think so.
No.
That's, that's why we have the trustees.
So let me just clarify this question and make sure I understand. There's a trust. There was a decision made by the prior trustees to have the Select Board manage the trust. We have, if we have fees that we receive as part of the, we control the funds for that. We do not need to come to you and ask permission to spend those fees. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's like a department budget. It's part of the town's budget. So you are authorized to spend that money that you get from your fees. As far as the grant goes, I don't know what it was like back in the 90s. Excuse me. Today, if a town has granted funds and they go unspent, it goes back to the organization that granted the funds and they spend it somewhere else. So we may still have that outstanding. I would doubt it. You know, the state wouldn't just keep hanging on to money for us to spend forever.
And if we, is, there's grant money if we want to try and apply for it to make improvements at the Parkway? That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, just before we continue the conversation, we'll double check on that. There is a fund that was adopted just a couple of years ago in the town warrant that named the trustees as the agents to expend. So that's one bucket. There are two other buckets. One is the, if you remember, when we had the conversation back a couple of years ago with the Charitable Trust Division, they asked us to turn over a certain amount of money to the trustees of trust funds without, there weren't any named agents to expend. But let's just presume it was the Select Board. So that was another bucket of money. And then there is a third bucket of money, which is the interest gained from the trust itself, which are payments that are turned over to the town. And those are, again, under, my understanding is under your purview. And so if the trustees wanted to spend those funds, they'd come back to the Select Board.
Correct.
So there are three buckets of money that we're dealing with, with the trustees.
Melissa?
I would just make the recommendation, if you guys do want to apply for LWCF funding, Greg Beeson, the Recreation Director, is a fantastic resource and has really wonderful contacts at the state. The application would look strong if it was the trustees and the town together, but just some feedback.
Thanks, Melissa. Mr. Staples, thank you for the question.
Thank, thank you for the answer.
Hopefully we get that straightened out. So back to, back to the roadway. We had discussed one option to consider closing the Parkway to vehicular traffic. Would require the board considering putting a warrant article on the ballot, holding multiple public hearings, and then having it go to town meeting. If it passed, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dean, it would then need to go up to the state for final approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to open it up to the public unless the board has any initial comments.
Mr. Chair, too, I would say that the way the warrant article is envisioned, that it would obtain, the town would obtain approval from both the Division of Charitable Trusts and the Rockingham County Probate Court.
Okay, all right. And I'm sure we have some opinions. I know I have some. But I'd like to open it up to the public. If anybody would like to weigh in, just please state your name and your address for the record.
Sally Ward, 72 Park Street.
Good evening.
I, I had been originally in favor of closing the road. And I enjoy the Parkway every morning. And not that the circumstance was great, but it was wonderful to have the Parkway closed to traffic. However, there's been quite a bit of chatter, which I'm sure you're well aware of, about the pros and cons of doing that. And I think the, having one-way traffic is, is part of the solution. But I wonder if, rather than closing the road entirely to vehicular traffic, if we made it so that there was no through traffic? So that those who, who need to drive their cars to enjoy the Parkway could park at one end, but not drive through. And that might be a good compromise to those of us who don't like to have through traffic, but also give access to people who really need to drive their cars to enjoy the park that those of us who walk enjoy as well. So that would be one thing I would like the board to consider. And I don't know what the implications of that are with regard to state approval and so on and so forth. So it wouldn't be closing the Parkway totally to traffic, but keeping parking at one end or the other, or perhaps both ends. Just no through traffic so that the middle could be the park rather than a Parkway.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Susan Drinker, sort of the same question, Sally. And I guess what my thought or question was, we discussed this summer about some options. And one option was, again, opening up one end and making it available for parking so that everybody could enjoy our beautiful Parkway. If in fact that is a solution, how do we go about paying for that? That's just a question.
That's part of the equation, correct.
Okay.
And I would envision that that would be part of the warrant article because presumably it would cost, it would cost some money. I know Mr. Dean and I have had some initial conversations about looking into that. You know, what it would cost yet, I don't know. But certainly if there's the appetite to do that, that would be, that would certainly have to be part of the article.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And there were just some discussions a couple of years ago about a turnaround, putting a turnaround in the Parkway. And we actually had a quote that was fairly well-refined at about $26,000. So that's one potential iteration of that. It doesn't mean it is the one. That was a conversation that was started a couple of years back.
Presumably the cost has increased since then with everything that's happened.
I would think so.
But still, that doesn't sound.
Hello, Bruce Jones, Dogtown Road in Exeter. I'm going to advocate for shutting the Parkway down. I agree, you know, maybe some parking at the end. I've talked to people. I've seen the chatter. That it'd be difficult for handicapped people, elderly people. But I think putting some, like a turnaround or something like that where they can enjoy the park. But I've been down there since they've opened it up. And I was sitting down there and, you know, the kids are riding on their bikes. And people aren't going that slow down there, you know? Kids were running, you know, scattering. And I know some people like put in speed bumps, but the towns tried that before. You know, we paid to put the speed bumps in and we tore them out, so I don't see.
It doesn't braid well with the plows.
Yeah. Let's not do the same mistake twice. But I, you know, I think it'd make a safer place for, you know, people to walk, you know, whether you're handicapped, elderly, you know, the kids can play. So I think it's more of an inclusive than an exclusive solution. So I'm going to advocate for something like that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Jackie Bonsi. I live on 8 Lincoln Street. I'm in favor of closure of the Parkway. I think it's an awesome space that we make so much use of when it's closed. And with COVID, we really were able to make so much additional use of our outdoor spaces. And Swayze Parkway is the Central Park of Exeter. And I think it's been wonderful to see so many people out there. I think with the road open to one-way traffic, it's really like a freeway and people are going pretty fast. Like I'm out there at 6:00 AM sometimes and it's like 50 miles an hour with, you know, people, people don't hold back. It's a wide road and you only have one-way traffic, so you can just go as fast as you want. On Lincoln Street, the way that the road has been narrowed over the past couple of years has really made it a lot safer in that shopping district. And I think something like that could make a big difference if that road were really narrow and maybe have a fence, if you can do something like that. Again, I have no idea the cost, but some type of fence to allow for pedestrian traffic on part of that roadway would be such a nice solution. But yeah, overall in favor of closure of the roadway.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Anne Sermon, 14 Cullen Way. And I think it was last year, can you hear me all right with this muffle thing?
Yes, unclear.
I remember I was involved in the meeting in July when we last spoke about this and I appreciate everyone's time tonight. And I think the compromise was a good word for the going the one-way. I think that's really been a great help. Because I'm kind of the one that's sort of stuck on the macro view of this in terms of the way the trust itself was set up to begin with. And I don't want to get stuck on this like it's like it's some sort of nit. But it really is to me important because if I were a person who set up a fund back in 1930 for something to be done that I thought was a Parkway with a road going through it for pleasure vehicles, as is written in the trust, and I put money to it, as Mr. Swayze, as Mr. Yambro Swayze did, I would just be, I'm just a little concerned about what we're doing. about what we're doing here by then not allowing what he put money toward to set up for the pleasure of the town and anyone coming through here, that it can somewhat arbitrarily be changed. And it's not because it's a bad thing. I think what everyone says and why they want to close down is not necessarily a bad thing. But you have to then look at it in terms of, again, what if one of us put $150,000, $300,000 together to say, this is what I would like for the benefit of my town, only to just, as I say, some arbitrarily? Because it's not as though some horrible thing has gone on down there in, over the years. I think, to me, the biggest challenge would be pleasure vehicles, probably. It said a roadway for pleasure vehicles, so clearly in 1929, a pleasure vehicle didn't look like what it does today. So I can imagine, and nobody was going 50 miles an hour. So that, life went on and things changed. So I am totally aware of that. So I'm not just steeped in the past. I am just stuck on some of the legality of it. Because to me, you may then, and you can answer this in a minute, it sounds like you walked through the steps of, you might do a warrant article, it might pass, then you go to the state and check to see if it can, if it can be legitimately done. Is that right? So step one is the town would want to change it, but then you have to get approval by the charitable trust. Am I right?
But it needs to go, it needs to go to the voters first.
That's what I'm saying, right. But if, if, but once you get that far, technically, it couldn't, it could then be overturned by the charitable trust, too.
It could.
Okay. All right.
It could.
So that's...
But we won't know if we don't, you know, we have to start.
I understand that, but I also, I also don't understand why the words of the trust are being somewhat ignored, that this person who set this, it wasn't just the town did it. This person put money aside and said, I want a parkway, a roadway, a park with a road going through it. So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand is, doesn't mean I don't think it's a great idea to have, have what it was. But I think the one way was the compromise. To me, that's the compromise, because you keep the, you honor the trust by saying, pleasure vehicles can go through. That throughway that Dr. Ward talked about, that might be the key to it, where it's not a throughway, but it sort of is. I kind of like that idea. But again, I just want to be clear that we're true to this trust, because like I said, somebody put a whole lot of money toward it. It just seems very arbitrary for a town later on to just kind of say, well, so what? We're not going to do that anymore. I think that could be your tree city, that could be a lot of things, if people could just arbitrarily say, we just don't want to do that anymore. And I, I just want to be mindful of that before we make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
On that note, so we don't want people speeding down there. So what do we do? Do you put up like, you know, 15 mile an hour signs? Do you have the police down there? You know, like, how do you control the speed limit on the park, you know, so that it's safe for people to, so like, from the old-time pleasure vehicles to, I've been down there, you know, people use it as a cut through. They do go very fast. So how do you slow them down? What do we do? So if you're going to leave it open, I think that has to be addressed. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
One thing, Mr. Chair, too, it's probably worth mentioning that, and I've done this before, that in the original trust document, it was set up that the select board could terminate the trust after 50 years of existence. So we've said that before, I think, and I just wanted to bring it up, just so everybody understands that that's actually in the original trust. So the board has had that authority since 1979, at your discretion, to terminate the trust.
Lori Noonan, 35 Blackford Drive. I just wanted to kind of advocate what a lot of other people have said, that, you know, I really appreciated having it during COVID. I have walked there many, you know, over the years in general, and I felt like it was actually more used by a more diverse population of the town. But certainly, I would advocate for a way that people who needed to drive there, you know, if there was a remedy for that, that would be my recommendation. But it really was nice having no traffic.
Thank you.
Hi, Florence Refner, 5 Pine Street. And I've been up before and spoken about this. And I have a problem with hearing that one-way traffic is compatible with kids on skateboards and people with baby strollers and bicycles, because when you're down there, people do speed. It's a cut through. And it's just a real concern to me that kids got so used to having the freedom back and forth, that it's a real safety concern. And it seems to me there should be a compromise, because if you need the road for vehicular traffic, you know, for pleasure vehicles, which is not the same as 1929 today, but if you could close off and end where people who are handicapped or people who need to drive in, you even have the maintenance garage, that there's a driveway there, if it was closed to that point, people could drive in, turn around. It just seems to me there, there has to be a solution to this, that it serves both purposes. Because it's really dangerous now. And I've been down there, and like everyone said, people go 40 miles an hour. And if someone's on a, a kid is on a skateboard or on a bicycle, you can't stop. And it's just, they're not compatible in the roadway together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Refner. And just see if there's any, any further public comment. And we can open it back up again, too, but we can bring it back to the board, Select Woman Brown.
Yes, sorry. Russ, can you explain exactly what you're talking about with the, the eliminate the trust after 50 years? And that's been since, what, 1979? Can you further explain that?
Right. So in the trust document that lays out the Swayze Trust, it says right in the trust, the, and the select board are the ones named in the trust as overseers of the trust. And there's a provision in that document that says that the select board may terminate after 50 years of existence. So the trust came into being in 1929, and 50 years was, is 1979. So ever since that time, if the board wanted to terminate the trust, they had the ability to do that. And if they do that, then the money comes from, to, back to the town from the Key Bank, which is where the trust is managed today. So in effect, you would basically, I would, I would think we could look a little bit more into it, but I would think you would put something on file with charitable trust, saying that you're going to, you know, your intention is to terminate the trust. And then that's, that's the process, as far as I know. It hasn't gotten past, you know, discussions haven't generated enough questions for me to go too much further with it, but it's right in the trust document.
Did you have anything else, Select Woman Brown?
I do have a lot of thoughts. I have been in favor of closing the parkway to all traffic for years. And I am very sympathetic to the arguments that if we do that, then a certain population of our community can't use the parkway. And I do not want to support something that eliminates access for all sorts of people who want to use the parkway. I also walk, I walk my dog down, you know, around, through the mills, around, and so I watch the traffic. I don't actually go on the parkway every morning. And I can, you know, I know that there are a lot of vehicles that, that speed through there. I do not think that we need, we do not need that road as an access point. There is a road that goes exactly around it. And I am also very sympathetic to arguments about what was originally in the trust and how we have to honor that. However, I think that we have to adapt and change, and trusts are living, breathing documents like the Constitution. And so I am really in favor of taking what is in front of us, which is sort of a jewel of our town, a park that people can use in a number of different ways. And I am in favor of making it accessible to all of those different uses, to the best of our ability, which in my belief, is to close that parkway to through traffic that is just to access the other road. So that will be my vote. That will be how I advocate for this project. I think that we can be thoughtful and deliberate about how we allow access to this parkway for all of our residents. And, and that's where I very firmly come down, since I believe my very first meeting on, on this board back in 2018.
Thank you very much. Select Woman Gilman?
I, excuse me, I am also, I agree with Select Woman Cowan. I would like to see the vehicular access, but not necessarily the drive-through. I think there are people with physical disabilities that want the access, but find parking on Water Street just too difficult to man, to manipulate. So I would be in favor of either one end, doing some kind of design for either one end or the other, or even both, to make a place to park and then be able to turn around. And that takes a lot of space, I understand, and it's going to cost some money. So that's something that we would have to look at. We did do that little turnaround design at one point that ended up just not going anywhere. But this would be a little more extensive, in my mind, to actually have parking access. I want to keep some, I want to keep at least part of it open or closed to traffic, because there are people, you know, not just the kids on their skateboards and then the, the kids in strollers, but visually impaired, folks that, you know, need a walker, that have to manipulate now around cars or be aware, you know, just, maybe the cars aren't aware of them. But they need to feel free to be able to access what they want. They need to be able to feel the curb. They need to be able to tell the grass from the, from the road and that they're not, that there's no danger in getting out in the road. So that, that would be my, I guess my interpretation of the trust, is that, yes, it's open to pleasure vehicles, but in a defined area.
Select Woman Brown?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just come at it from fiscal responsibility. So I think honoring the trust can very easily betray the taxpayers, where several citizens have mentioned the liability, legal liability here. So whatever amount was paid in 1930 would be eclipsed by a number of lawsuits. So, you know, we've been, we've been presented with a number of liabilities that, you know, putting recreational vehicles aside and just being fiscally responsible in businesses, two ways to, you can make money or not lose money. And that parkway being open at all is begging to lose money.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah.
Before I weigh in, I'll come back to you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Thompson, for any thoughts you might have.
I have a couple of questions. And I, I know when they did the sewer project down there, there was a, there was a design for a turnaround or a parking space. I, I, do you, can you tell us why that didn't happen?
I think you were on the board.
I was on the board, if you're interested. It just, it was too expensive. It was not, and we'd never, there was never a really good design, and it just kind of went away. It wasn't voted on by the board, you know, up or down, it just went away. But we were reluctant at the time because of the cost, and it didn't really provide, it was just to turn around. It wasn't for parking or anything like that. What we're talking about here, or what I hear from the others, is that we're actually talking about making space for people to actually park and get out and use the parkway.
Well, and I, I would, I would just ask also, how is it going to be determined which end of the parkway would be closed?
Well, that's going to come in for some design and traffic engineering, I guess. We're, like, Select Woman Brown said, win or lose, you know, do we have to spend some money to make it a winning, a winning project? Then maybe we do. And maybe that's where dissolving the trust and the selectman, select board taking over that money comes in. You know, I'm not a traffic designer. I don't know which entrance is better or worse for the possibility of accident, accidents. I think the viewing distance on either end is bad. That makes a difference. But I think that we would be able to, depending on the attorney, the charitable trust's opinion, we'd be able to do something about it within the town without raising the warrant article. But our, our Public Works Department can make a first stab with our town planner, just because they know how, how roads work and how intersections work. And then I think that it would come to the board, because we're the ones that are the keepers.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be prudent, you know, and my envision was that DPW, the town planner, would take a first, you know, shot at this. But I think it would be prudent to come up with two or three different options to look at, you know, in answer to your question, which end? Maybe it's both ends. Maybe it's one end or the other. Which is safer? What is the safer way to do it? Maybe look at it also from a cost. Is one area, is one end going to cost more than the other? So I think to have two or three options brought back for discussion would be the first step towards answering that question.
Okay. I, I would say, too, having worked down there for a number of years, when they redid the road years ago, they did narrow that road. That road is not as wide as it it used to be years ago. So that, that road has been narrowed, and it, it did make two-way traffic a little bit difficult, certainly. And then they went to parking to one side. So when we talk about narrowing that road, it had been narrowed years ago when it was redone.
One of the interesting things about the decision we made to have the parking on one side was to allow vehicular traffic to be smoother, but what it did was allow it to be faster. And that's actually one of the things on, on any street, that if you allow for parking on both sides and people kind of have to slalom, they have to be slower because somebody's going to be coming at them from the other direction inevitably. So, but that, that just makes it worse as far as a pedestrian or somebody using the green space, because there are cars on both sides and traffic coming, you know, in a way.
Well, and, and again, there are some things that can be done now. A lot of places use them to, to slow traffic. Doesn't really, you know, inhibit travel on the road so much. And I would also ask that, you know, if, that the trustees be involved. Because quite frankly, I was surprised when I met with the water department to, to realize that all the sewer on that side of town goes through Swayze Parkway, which, again, having worked down there and grown up in town here, never knew. So, you know, I, I would be disappointed if they, you did away with the trustees, because I think that the trustees that we have now have a lot of history down there and have some valuable insight as to, you know, and ideas as to how that, some of that stuff should be done, so.
Yeah, I think there's two, there's two sets of trustees, and there's the one that we elect, that you're sitting on now, who are, you know, physically here and watching and taking care of the property. And then there's the trustees that are in charge of the money.
Correct. I, I understand that.
Yeah. So we're not talking about breaking up the trustees that we vote for every year, or every, yeah, every year it is one anyway. So.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
No, no further comments, other than just following the money from the kiosk and where the, where the funds went. Just really like to have that documented to know what went where. Do we provide that? By, our finance chair can send it to us, you know, show us where it went.
Mr. Dean will.
Yeah, well, we can, we can ask the question, but again, none of us were around in 1993 or '94, and those, those books have long since...
We'll do the best we can, Mr. Thompson.
And all I can do is ask.
I have some thoughts for Mrs. Refner, please.
I was thinking about talking about the roadway, you know, or making parking areas. And when you think about the layout of the parkway, the Newfields Road end, there's so much open green space there that could be utilized for a turnaround or something, whereas coming off Water Street, where it's more difficult with downtown traffic, you don't have much green space on either side of the parkway. But on the Newfields Road, and you have a lot more to work with down there.
Can I, I agree with that in theory. However, when we talked about planting trees and replanning trees and all, I was told by the, the Water and Sewer Department that nothing could go on the pipeline. So pipeline goes right through there.
Yeah, I remember where it went in. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know exactly standing here, but it just, I... but it just, I know on the Water Street end, there's almost no space.
Correct.
On either side. And about the kiosks, may I just say something about that, please? It would be nice to know, you know, when you come back, where you're planning on putting it. Because when I was a trustee, we did talk about it. And nothing ever came to fruition about it. But maybe what the design would be and where it would go would be interesting to know.
It didn't get that far after I ran into some challenges.
But when you do, it would be interesting to know what the plans are.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruffner. Before I offer my thoughts, we have, we have somebody on Zoom who's joining us with a question or a comment. And I'd like IT maybe to let them in. And if you, and if, once you're in, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is, oh, here I am. Yes, my name is Adele Robertson, and I live at 106 Front Street. Thank you for inviting me into your Zoom meeting. I too walk the parkway very often. And I would like to see it utilized as just a throughway for pedestrians. But understanding that the, there has to be, I suppose, the application of road, you know, of car going through there, could there be a line down the center of the road to have the cars that want to go through the parkway or to possibly stop at the parkway to unload someone maybe in a wheelchair to cross the road, to sit on one of the benches closest to the river? So I'm thinking if there's a way that we could maybe come to a compromise to benefit everyone, to maybe paint the road so that it would be, appear like a walkway for part of that roadway. So pedestrians and bicycles and people who wanted to walk in the road would have a safer place to walk. And the cars would know not to get into that section of the road. I hope I'm making myself clear. And that the parking, people who wanted to park at Swayze Parkway would park on the left-hand side. And what I mean the left-hand side is that, I think of the New Fields Road where the brook is. So they would be parking on that side of the street. And so when cars were parked there, they would have to slowly go into that pedestrian part to make sure there was nobody, to round that car, to get by that car, to continue on down through the New Fields end of the park. So I was thinking if there was a way to maybe use paint to have a meeting of both concerns?
That's, that's a very, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
No, that's, that's an interesting thought. And certainly one that we can ask the town engineer and the DPW director. I know very recently, based on another citizen's request, I learned a lot about crosswalks. And I always thought crosswalks were very safe. And the more you had, the better it is. But I learned that that's not always true. So, you know, this is certainly something that we can bring back for discussion and entertain this as a possible option.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
And I have to say, it's almost aching, you know, this discussion of autos and pedestrians and access is begging the complete streets idea of the verge between the cars, a green space and then the bike and pedestrian area. But when Mr. Staples said the roadway had been narrowed at one point, so I'm not sure now that it's wide enough to do that and just be a throughway completely without any parking available. Because that would be like taking six feet or more out of the roadway. But that's, that's what I see in my brain.
So I think, much like the Zoom feature, one thing I think the pandemic, as awful as it is, no, it was, but I think it accelerated the inevitable in some, in some ways. For instance, giving access to people to come into a public meeting from home. I think it also accelerated this conversation about the parkway. I know everybody's had opinions, you know, since, I've lived here since 2000, 2009. So I'm glad we're having, we're having this conversation. And the word that I think everybody's used this evening is compromise. And I know that, you know, while the parkway was closed during the emergency order, people loved it being closed. I'm one of them. And when we first started having this conversation this summer, from a personal standpoint, as a citizen, I was really in favor of keeping it closed because everybody seemed to be enjoying it. But the problem is, I was wrong. Everybody wasn't enjoying it. And, but that was as a citizen. As a Select Board member, I kept an open mind because we got an awful lot of emails and phone calls and folks coming to meetings. And that's the enjoyable part of this job. So I'm glad to hear the word compromise. And everybody's got some different ideas. But I think, for the most part, people are moving towards the same things, to try to make it as inclusive for all of our citizens. And so I would be very open to changing my mind from closing it entirely to something along the lines, like most have talked this evening, to allow folks to drive in. The roundabout way that we've talked about for a couple of months is intriguing. And so I would like, Mr. Dean for DPW, to start working on not, not only coming up with a couple of different options, designs, but also coming up with cost. And I think that if the board is inclined to move forward on a warrant article, obviously that needs to be included. And we need to be able to do it in time to have public hearings so folks can come weigh in and tell us how they feel. Regarding the trust, I couldn't have said it better. You know, it is a living, breathing trust. And as time moves on, it's open to, not reinterpretation, but building upon it. I think dissolving the trust, which the Select Board has had the authority to do since 1979, is not the right thing to do. I think having public meetings and putting it on the warrant and having the voters decide is the best way to figure out the next steps, not dissolving the trust. I don't think that a five, an elected five-member board should dissolve a trust. That's my opinion. And Mr. Staples, I would be in favor of keeping the trustees. Obviously, you know, you're elected for a reason and you do a good job. And, you know, not you, but you as the trustees. One thing that we didn't talk about, and I'm staring right at Chief Wilking, is we also need to take into consideration how's Public Works going to plow it? And how are public safety vehicles going to be able to access it for an emergency? Whether it's an emergency to cut through or an emergency if somebody gets injured on the parkway. So I think these are all things that we need to, Mr. Dean, when we're looking at options, is factor in public safety and having Chief Wilking and Chief Poole in, William. And those are really my thoughts. So would the board? Obviously, we've tasked Mr. Dean of DPW to come up with some options. Mr. Dean, or rather, members of the board, do we want to ask Mr. Dean to start a conversation with council on how to word the potential warrant article?
Yes. Yes. Would you include the two, two things about road closure solution, whichever it is? And the trust? I know that you don't want to break the trust.
Well, no, I think council should give us, I mean, much like the design of it, council should give us a couple of different options to consider, I'm sure, if you'd be able to do that. And back to you, Mr. Staples. I think continuing the conversation with the trustees present with the Select Board is the right thing to do. So you'll be included in these, as you have been. And I appreciate the time that the trustees have given us and also the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Dean?
Yes, I have it on my list to talk with legal counsel and also talk to Public Works about creating a scenario that involves, from what I'm hearing, some ideas about ending at one end of the parkway, no through, no through traffic, and then also talking with them about painting lines and what that might mean for the parkway. And I believe that's it for now. And the trust, in terms of the mechanics of terminating the trust and that sort of thing.
So looking at the calendar, and I know we've asked you to do an awful lot, but if this is going to go on the warrant this year, then obviously, and, you know, we should have at least two or three public hearings on this. So we're going to need to get moving on this so that we can have the article done in time, if that's the route we decide to take.
Okay. I'll begin the conversation tomorrow with Public Works.
All right.
Point of inquiry, with the proposed warrant that you're looking at, will it be one that is three parts or three separate warrant articles or everything altogether? Where it might be confusing to the voters to know what they're voting on? Will it be separate pieces that, you know, can spell out specific what you're requesting based upon the recommendation of council?
So I don't think anybody wants this to be confusing at all. And I promise you that I will give you a better answer to your question once council gives us some options.
Okay.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Staples, you have any closing remarks or before?
I don't.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
No. So at this point, I'm going to move that the board of trustees adjourn.
Second.
Folks in favor? Aye. So we adjourn at 8:15.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for your comments this evening. So we have Chief Wilking and Mr. Murray here for a COVID-19 update. And I think maybe Mr. Dean and Assistant Manager Roy are going to be weighing in. So I don't know, Russ, who do you want to go first?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think Chief Wilking can come up with James and kind of give a state of the, state of the state on COVID.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Select Board. Russ?
Good evening.
I wish the numbers were better, but we're all watching the same news feeds. We have all listened to the governor's press conferences. The state of COVID in the nation in New Hampshire is not getting better. It seems to be getting worse. And what's troubling in the phone calls that I was on all afternoon is that the state is very concerned about the status of our children and the fact that Friday alone, 667 of the 1,077 cases were children between, under the age of 18. Let's just call it youths and young. So vaccinating our schoolchildren is going to become paramount. And I know James Murray will speak to some of the vaccination process, but it's definitely in our, you know, in our crosshairs. Exeter still is doing better than most. Most of you have heard, the state had a data collection, let's just call it a glitch, switching from Vinnie, one process of vaccination, from VAMs, and trying to figure out how we're going to coordinate the booster shots. Most of you got your little COVID card, and there was only two spots on the COVID card. And now they've, they've had to work through a system of how do we track the third booster vaccination? And possibly, let's just face the facts, we don't know if six months from now there'll be a second booster or a third booster. I don't want to create hysteria. But the system has to be able to be adaptable. And some of the data collection processes that were in question had a lot to do with creating this, this data collection and vaccination process. But Exeter had 44 cases over that two-week span from our last Select Board meeting to now. But we had a great week last week. I'm in a great week, 14. And again, our numbers are very stable. We're very fortunate. We live in a community that took vaccination seriously and really has gone out. You look at the crowd, you know, wearing masks as heeding the warning. But that doesn't mean work still can't be done. So we have a lot, a lot of work to do. I know, just trying to get all the parts and pieces together. I don't want to overspeak because I know this is the town manager, Roy, has some information, Russ does, and I'll let James just do the vaccination piece. And I think we can just do a question and answer if we want to fill in some holes, if that works for you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Come on up, James.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So for our vaccine status for the town, we are going to conduct a clinic this Saturday for four, five to 11-year-olds throughout the SAU. It'll be taking place at the Lincoln Street School. We're doing a walkthrough tomorrow to get more idea of the logistics behind it. But we have 800 doses right now. We're hoping that'll get us through the two-dose series for the students. But we're still a little unsure on numbers. On the high end, we suspect we might get as many as 520 students. On the low end, 320. So either way, the 800 will last between both doses. If we need to go over, we can order more for a second dose. So we're prepared for that. The updated standing orders came with a pre-screening questionnaire that will be given to parents and families on site. And like at our last meeting that I was here, Selectman Brown brought up the contraindications for children getting the vaccine. This pre-screening questionnaire will be done in person, signed by parents. And it involves all those contraindications. So answering yes to any of the questions about previous existing conditions, things like that, doesn't necessarily mean that you can't be vaccinated. But the providers on site will have more detailed instructions if students or children do have some of those. We are currently ordering Moderna and Pfizer boosters for town staff as well. We could have those as early as this Friday. I said we'll be getting both Moderna and Pfizer. Some town staff were aware, did not go through us to get their initial dose when we were just doing Moderna. Some went to the fixed site and got Pfizer. So we'll able to, we'll be able to carry both and mixing and matching is saying is okay as well. So we'll be able to offer both the town staff. We just need to plan out when we can get those doses and when we can start administering them. We're also meeting tomorrow with the Exeter Housing Authority to start a booster clinic for those folks. They've indicated that they'd like to wait until after Thanksgiving, just based on they need time to gather numbers and get back to us. So we'll be discussing more in detail tomorrow as to how many doses and when they would like to schedule that. Other than that, anyone interested in receiving initial doses or getting boosters? We just urge them to talk to their PCP or link up with their local pharmacy and discuss it with them.
Great. One question. With town staff, with the Pfizer, Moderna, will you have enough of each so that if staff doesn't want to mix and match, you can administer what they had for the first two?
Right. We can, we'll be ordering tomorrow, I believe, getting Moderna and Pfizer. We can order every week. Every week, we get the shipment on Friday, as long as we place the order early enough. So I think the plan is to order a limited amount of Pfizer, mostly order Moderna, because that's what we administered. As we get information, we'll be working with department heads and trying to get that information spread down. We can get more accurate figures from them as we go.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for me or?
Any questions for Mr. Murray? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Melissa Roy, Assistant Town Manager, HR Director. I'd like to talk to you guys this evening about two different COVID proposals. Over the last six days, we have had seven employees test positive for COVID-19. One employee was required to quarantine due to an unvaccinated household exposure. Four employees are currently considered breakthrough cases, and three employees are unvaccinated individuals. The employees are from five different departments in various town buildings. All eight individuals will be required to quarantine for 10 days. We haven't had this many employees with active COVID cases all at the same time. And when I say active COVID positive cases, we've had quarantining cases happen at the same time, but not as many positive cases. So, the first thing we'd like to chat about is, on September 30th, the town's COVID leave policy expired. Through the FF-CRA, the Original Cares Act, the town was able to provide some COVID leave time through the federal government. And then, in March, we decided to extend that through ARPA funding, which extended it to September 30th of 2021. And what that did was that gave an employee 80 hours of leave time if they needed to use it for either COVID sickness or quarantining, to deal with what they needed to deal with. We would like to propose, which you have in a packet, I apologize that it just came to you today, this COVID situation has been quite fluid over the last few days. We would like to go ahead and offer COVID leave options to employees that have tested positive for COVID-19 for a few reasons. We are trying to incentivize those employees to go and get tested. If we provide leave that they have to use for their, or we provide leave if they test positive, we're hoping that will incentivize people to get tested, not to just sort of fight through thinking it's allergies and the mix, and essentially pulling those positive cases out of the workforce and protecting the employees that are currently here. The other option to use COVID leave would be an unvaccinated individual who has a household contact that tests positive for COVID-19. And again, the realization for that is pulling out an employee that has a better chance of testing positive out of the workforce, thus protecting those of us, those people that are currently here. We are concerned that since the leave expired, the option to get the COVID leave expired, we want to make sure that we provide the employees the opportunity to get tested and be out and feel comfortable that their sick leave isn't going to be jeopardized. So, that is our first proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, I am sorry that that came today. It's been a quite fluid situation.
One thing I would add to that while the board is looking at the policy is that, as you can see here, we would propose making it retroactive to October 1st.
So, have you, have you, or are you able to work up, Selectman Brown, I'm going to steal a page out of your book, fiscal end of things here. Have we worked up what additional cost it would be to the town to provide this additional paid time? And the reason I'm asking the question is, if the town does not provide this additional time between folks coming in, as you astutely said, Melissa, that they're not going to get tested, or if they are tested, they may still come in positive and infect more employees, and/or you have, you know, unions grieving. Will that cost be significantly higher to the town than just providing additional time for those that need it?
I think if we have a handful of people in one department all go down, it's going to cause quite a situation. I will say that our first option in the policy, as you'll see, is for anybody that can work remotely to provide that option to them. But as you all know, we have a good amount of employees that can't work remotely. So, those that can and are not sick, let's say they're feeling well and would like to work remotely, we would like to try to do that. There may be overtime needed to cover, but I think it's easier for us to cover one employee or two employees rather than five or six if we get to that situation. But I guess I'll let Russ answer if you have a different thought on that.
No, I think that's very well stated. I think that's, those comments cover.
Well, I think in addition to that, I mean, you know, sure, the financial liability is significant, but also, if we have folks working in town departments that are sick, and either don't know that they're sick because they haven't been incentivized to test, or they're just not telling, not only are you putting further, the further staff or additional employees at risk, but you're putting the public at risk because most of our employees interface with the public. Certainly, we have, you know, a number of boards and committees that meet with staff. So, that's concerning from a public health standpoint as well.
Yeah. And I think we have fantastic employees, and we want to support them. I don't want to make it seem like I think people will lie. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that I think it would be better for us to support them in doing what we think would be better for the entire workforce.
I think I would add too, Mr. Chairman, that application of this leave is going to be on a very, I mean, we hope to have very few of these cases. And that's also, so when you're thinking about this leave, it actually only impacts people that are qualified to go out under this leave in particular. And again, it's very few people at the, if you look at it as a percent of our total workforce, I think right now, we have eight cases that are active. So, you would say that that's roughly 5% of our total workforce, full and part-time.
And unfortunately, I think the balance that Russ and I decided or wanted to propose was, you'll notice childcare isn't in here. At this point, I think that is something that someone's going to have to use their own accrued time. I say that as a mother of three, and I may be one of those people that has to do that. But we want to protect our employees and support them. We just can't support them with the entire options that the bill previously had, but we think that this is a pretty good compromise.
I have to ask, because the chair brought it up, but have the unions been part of this conversation? And are they?
Sure. So, the unions, the unions haven't been part of this conversation yet. However, at this point, they have no leave options, and they're aware of that. So, I guess I can't speak for them that they would turn down the option for leave time. I think that it would be a positive thing. We're happy to reach out to all the union presidents to see if there is an issue, certainly. But we're trying to provide a benefit, not take one away.
I'd be in full support of this. I just had two, is there a confidentiality aspect to this? It's all?
Of why I'm not telling you who's COVID positive?
When somebody seeks this leave, is there just sort of a, it would be kept?
Yeah. So, we, the state requires us to keep track of if we give COVID leave. Is that what you're talking about?
I guess sort of just workforce-wise, would the person, would it be clear, hey, this person's out on COVID leave?
Is out on COVID leave.
Oh, oh, I see. So, I'm sorry. HR and the town manager's office and the health officer get notified, and we determine how long the individual needs to be out. And then, it's on a need-to-know basis. Obviously, that person's supervisor needs to know, but we don't, I'll be honest, I made phone calls on Saturday notifying staff, but I didn't tell them who in the department was out. Clearly, when you have a one or two-person department, you kind of figure it out. But we try really hard to be very careful with that.
Yeah. And then, the second part is just minus, without an executive order now that helps us sort of keep the workers safe, what is, is there like a sort of a sense of what we would, what threshold we'd cross where we need to shore up Town Hall again and sort of, because there's lots of sources of infection to town employees, but the public is a big one.
Sort of what we've been having discussions today, and you're kind of leading me into the next discussion, in that everybody can go home and do whatever they'd like. And we were going to ask the board if they had any thoughts on considering some options for employee protections that may come in the form of wearing a mask while at work. Russ and I discussed today that we weren't quite sure if we were at that point yet. I will talk to you a little bit. If you're so inclined, I'll move to a few options.
Excuse me. Before we do, I just want to make sure, are there any questions or comments on the leave part of it from Selectwoman Brown Triola, from Selectwoman Cowan?
I am very in support of having as much support as we can offer to our sick employees. You know, I agree. I think, I think we have outstanding people who work for the town, and I certainly want to protect everybody. My concern, like, sounds like it is going to lead into what we're talking about, about whether or not we are making sure that we are as safe as possible in the work, in the workspace, because we are, you know, a lot of these employees do interface with the public. I know my wife was just exposed to somebody who is a town staffer and COVID positive, and we have unvaccinated children at home, or mid-vaccinated children at home. And, you know, this is really concerning. This is really concerning. We're talking about people's health and safety, and I agree about confidentiality. And also, we need to make sure that we're doing everything in our power so that this doesn't have to be used, because we're protecting ourselves and the public, who is trusting that we're doing the right thing. So, yes, I am very interested in hearing about the options that we're going to talk about to keep everybody as safe as possible here.
So, first, I want to thank the fire department, because their help in employee and resident vaccination has been just over the moon amazing, and we are so lucky to have them. And the fact that they're helping employees get booster shots, and residents in Water Street, who have a dear place in my heart, and just residents in general, I'd be forever grateful for all their work. And I know Justin Pizon works as well with the chief and James. So, the discussion then becomes, do we want to consider some other protection for employees? And is that, is this the time? Is it not the time? Do we wait a little bit to see? What do we want to do? And so, in discussions with Russ and I, we sort of came up with a few discussion points, and would love any feedback that you have as Russ makes the decision on what he'd like to do going forward. We sort of came up with five. I will tell you that we haven't completely vetted everything, and still have a few questions, but let me go through them a little bit quickly. We have the option of requiring employees to wear masks when they're at work and unable to socially distance. Since four of the seven current cases are breakthrough cases, we do know that it seems to be at least for our employees affecting both vaccinated and unvaccinated. Option two would be to require masks for employees while indoors, and while socially distancing cannot be achieved for 14 days. Since we have eight cases, maybe we have everybody put masks on for two weeks, just to see if there's any more spread, and then reevaluate at the end of the 14 days. We also have the option to require unvaccinated employees to wear a mask, one indoors and within six feet of another employee. All of the policies that we're proposing would have to go through Town Council to make sure that we're not doing anything inappropriate. We do know at this time, two other communities have the policy of unvaccinated individuals only wearing masks. Option four would require employees and boards and committee members to mask during committee interactions when six feet social distancing cannot be achieved. And then, the fifth one is to be, to continue the status quo and monitor the situation. As I said, we haven't had this number of employees test positive throughout the whole pandemic, so maybe it is an anomaly and just something that we're dealing with. So, I think Russ and I, and I don't want to speak for Russ, but Russ and I would love to hear any opinions or thoughts on the matter, as he sort of works through what his next steps would be.
Yeah. And I will say too, before the board dives into this a little bit more, just that we have, as we all know, we have a diverse workforce, right? So, we have many, many, many people in our workforce already that are vaccinated, and see the act of being vaccinated as one that is a step in a positive direction. So, a mask is not needed. And we do have, obviously, we have people in our workforce too that are unvaccinated. So, that is, you know, that's a consideration that we have. But I just wanted to let the board know before you begin your discussion about this, that that's, that, these are the five pieces we've come up with for consideration, just because, again, we're in that position now where we've had, we have probably 80% of our workforce vaccinated, I believe, give or take. And, you know, we are wrestling with something that could be, and again, that's why the monitoring, the situation is in the packet, because we may be down to four cases in a week. We may not be at eight. We may be more than eight. You know, we don't know yet. So, anyway, I just wanted to put some context on that.
Thank you. So, we've been down this side most of the meeting. I'll start down this side. Selectwoman Brown Triola, did you have any thoughts?
I'll let you know if I did.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan?
I think I've been clear. I am in favor of masking. I think it keeps everybody safe. I am also very in favor of vaccines and vaccinations. So, the 20% of our workforce that has not been vaccinated, please consider doing that.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gillon?
Yeah, I think the policy is great, but the recommendations that you're going through for preventive practices, I'm with Selectwoman Cowan, and just saying it's time to mask up again, just so we don't get that beyond eight, you know? That's what I've been observing. And in the information that you've given us, there are quite a few towns that have done that already.
Selectwoman Brown?
So, the number of breakthrough cases of the eight is how many? Is it two?
So, we have seven, seven positive cases.
Seven.
We have four breakthrough cases, three cases in unvaccinated, and then we have a single unvaccinated individual that needed to quarantine due to a household exposure, which under the state of New Hampshire guidelines is required. But all of those eight individuals are required to be home for 10 days.
So, the majority of the COVID, of the positive tests are from breakthrough cases, right?
They are.
So, vaccination could be removed from this as a, as a criteria for making a decision, and masks would be the highest, just around the decision-making here. It's like, we need to institute masks, you know, regardless of your vaccination status. We have a situation where there's a number of positive cases that, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is, you said it, this is the highest number we've had so far.
For employees with active cases at one time, there is one thing that I would like to discuss, and that is the fire station. The fire station is under a sort of a different set of rules, and I'm going to have you guys correct me if I'm wrong. So, I'm going to, I'm going to say this the right way. Because the firefighters work on a 24-hour shift, they're considered household contacts of each other on their own shift. So, when you look at the New Hampshire state guidelines, it's broken up into vaccinated, unvaccinated for household contacts and non-household contacts. Any firefighter that would become COVID positive, they would, any unvaccinated firefighter, now I will say this, they have an insanely amazing rate of vaccination. So, I just want to say that before, before I talk about this. But if there was an unvaccinated member of the fire department, no matter if they wore a mask or not, they would be considered household contact. And I do think that we should consider a little leniency, because they have to live together and be together for fun. They're sleeping together. It would be really hard for them, just because they're not coming in for just an eight-hour shift. So, there may need to be some consideration there. And no matter what happens, is that correct, you guys are considered a household close contact. So, they're a little bit of a subset.
I'm just trying to establish basic criteria for making a decision. So, we've mentioned anomaly, and this matches with state trends as well. So, I don't think we can call this an anomaly. Cases are rising. Positive cases are rising. The rising in the town among vaccinated and unvaccinated, we can't be sure, are unvaccinated testing positive at a higher rate?
I don't know the community one, excuse me.
As far as town staff goes.
No, I know the state is tracking that to their best ability, the breakthroughs and the non-breakthroughs. To your point, I would agree, but it's kind of anecdotal. Breakthroughs are increasing. Cases in New Hampshire are increasing. Cases in Exeter are increasing, are continuing to move forward. Cases amongst town employees. And it's disappointing to hear that four of the seven, you know, the basic majority are breakthrough cases. We all had hoped, we, I mean, I've come here for months saying the vaccinations, and we'd all hoped we could ditch the masks when you're vaccinated. And it's just, it's shown over the past three or four, five months, maybe even six, that although vaccinations have helped, allow us to stay, you know, get less sick, I'll use that term, kind of weather the effects of COVID better, but we're still exhibiting signs of COVID. You know, there's no, there's no round, no way to talk it different. One thing about the fires house, and Melissa said it right, we do kind of fall into a different category where people who are in the same building, dining in the same area, sleeping in the same quarters are considered family contact. But we also fall under very strict guidelines of when we have to wear masks through the whole protocol. We can't approach a patient that is COVID positive or suspected, and there's a huge list, any kind of breathing difficulty. We're fully gowned and fully masked, so you would expect to see that regularly in the firehouse. A fire alarm activation in a business, we may not have a mask if we have our full gear on. But generally, as you think But generally, as you think through a mask mandate or employees wearing masks during public contact, we're already doing that. It's just what Melissa was speaking of, in the firehouse with a six or seven people on a shift, we may not, although shift members wear a mask. And when we meet with the public, we have a mask on as administration, because we have small offices and we do that. But I was just, so we've been kind of weighing it out for the past several months, you know, without the need of a policy or procedure, but we would support anything the board is looking to bring out. But long answer to a short question, but breakthroughs are coming around, and we hope, you listen to news, we hope that the booster shots increase that effectiveness, again, pushing it well back toward 100%. But we know coming in, I'm thinking back through Pfizer was in the low 90s, 93, 94, I think Moderna was in the mid 90s, and J&amp;J was in the high 70s. Easy math, if you have a J&amp;J shot, 22 of 100 were already thought to be a possible breakthrough, so even if you had the shot, so just kind of thinking that through, so.
Yeah, so basically, we have a situation with our workforce. Positive tests are coming at a higher rate, this is, the rate has sped up, this is in a short amount of time, we have more cases than before. The lowest common denominator, the least we can do is institute masks, so that's sort of looking for a criteria for making a decision. It's, we have a situation here, we don't have a, it's not a trend, it's like a spike that matches a state spike or a state movement, so the position of the board, or the position of, you know, the board would be that we have a situation and the lowest common denominator is masks will at least, you know, stem, they'll do something regardless of, you know, it seems like an appropriate addressing of a wider, something that's happening in a wider area statewide that we're seeing at a local level. So, does that make sense?
It does, thank you. So, does this proposal include board and committee members when they're coming in?
So that's something that we're looking for feedback on. Right now, we, I think in one of the, excuse me, on, oh, I do have my glasses, excuse me, I'm sorry. On number four, we did want to talk about potentially having board members consider wearing masks. You know, the, the thought behind this originally was just employees only and letting the public do what they'd like, just because I know that's sort of another conversation and a different ballgame. But I think that your recommendation to Russ could be employees, boards, committees, whatever. I think we were trying to put these, put these ideas out for some feedback, because I think ultimately, Russ, it's Russ's call for the employees, but we would love to hear what your thoughts are.
And I don't want to, I also want to make sure that we're, in the context of the conversation, we understand that, like I was saying, we have some differing, I mean, this isn't like one, a single mindset that we're dealing with. We, it's, it's complex, and, and that's why we came up with the five things that we came up with, and I think it could be that the board ends up really focusing in on one or two of these particular issues, but just to sort of re, you know, reconnect on it. Option one would be requiring masks for employees while indoors in public buildings and when social distancing cannot be achieved. Second would be the same thing, but for 14 days, a 14-day window to kind of see how the COVID cases either uptick or go down. Three would be requiring any unvaccinated employee to wear a mask when indoors and within six feet of another employee. And again, like Melissa said, there are two communities that that's how they're managing it, and I'll just, I'll name them, Lunedarian, I think New Market is the other one.
Yeah.
That are managing it that way. Four would be requiring employees and board committee members to mask during committee interactions when six-foot social distancing cannot be achieved. And then five is, is a monitoring. So five is just a status quo and monitoring the situation.
So now, for those, for those staff members that have offices, for instance, you have an office.
Right.
You share an office.
I share an office, so I would have to wear a mask.
So if you're in your office by yourself, or the town, or whomever that has their own office, they can then take their mask off while they're alone?
Yes.
In their office.
And I think we're trying to say if you're not six feet next to someone, just sort of going back to that social distance, I think of, I think of Kristen and Doug, they're well over six feet apart, they're on other ends of an office. I think there would be some appetite for them to not have to wear masks, so.
See, and went back to the boards and committees, you know, if we're all sitting here, we're not six feet apart, when the BRC's meeting, I mean, that's, that's just a whole group of people, or I know Wednesday, you know, the meeting agenda's triple build, you can have some people downstairs and in alternate locations where obviously the room's smaller. So, I mean, I think for, you know, boards and committees should be included in whatever we consider. My, my only concern, and again, this is, this is probably, this is purely to keep employees safe. This is not a, you know, it's to preserve the safety of the employees. I think Selectwoman Brown, you said it perfectly, when, you know, as a municipality, you know, we don't fall under the federal OSHA guidelines, and unfortunately, the New Hampshire does not have a state OSHA program, so the whole, over 100 employees, you have to be vaccinated, or that's out the window. So what's the next, next best thing? Obviously, from day one, you know, masks have been, you know, the number one guideline. So what happens if you've got two employees that work together and one is disputing whether they're six feet apart, or tell them to put a mask? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to think what could happen.
No, this is, this is what Russ and I discussed today. I don't really have an answer right away, I have to be honest, and I wish that I did, because I think we need to think more about it. I think that HR can help mediate if there are discrepancies in people's office spaces, but at the end of the day, one of the things Russ and I have sort of had a hard time with is on if there isn't compliance, what do we do? And I'm sorry to say, but we haven't quite figured out the best answer to that, and I apologize for not having that, but we have sort of gone round and round because Russ and I want to support our employees and not make this a penalty that, that makes it, that doesn't fit the crime type of situation, but we just haven't quite put our finger on what we need to do. Previously, there was either a townwide mask mandate or a statewide mask mandate, and so there was sort of some other. Now, we know NHME has given the right to us to be able to require masks. What enforcement looks like is, we're still working that out, and I'm sorry to say.
Mr. Dean, help my memory, before the board passed the mask, townwide mask mandate in the end of August 2020, and we closed down town office to the public for a period of time in early summer, remember, we opened, we reopened back in?
July of 2020.
So we didn't have a townwide mask ordinance, and nor was there a state, but we did require folks to wear, did we require or did we suggest? I seem to remember we required.
My recollection is that we required it at that time, that there was an expectation that people would be wearing masks.
So I have a couple of thoughts, because, you know, part of me, I respect, you know, we've been vaccinated, we think that we're okay, and there is some level of risk that we can all assume, you know, it's different for everybody. And I, again, don't want, I don't think that we can go down the road of requiring vaccinations, and so I don't want to just require masks for people who are unvaccinated. I think that that sets up a really bad dynamic within the town. I would also leave it to sort of your best judgment, like, I think if two people share an office for eight hours, and they can decide, you know, I know, you know, I know you, I trust you, like, you know, like some of my sort of pod members in my group, like, you know, the fire department, there is sort of a level of trust and commitment that you can have, I think. And I also think if you're in an office space with one other person, that risk is limited as well, you know, if you're not walking around, you're not, you know, having meetings with people, you're just, you know, exposing each other, potentially. I think that that's something that's different, and I don't want to go down the road of like, taking away the potential to have paid leave if you, you know, like, that's not something that I'm interested in, because I think that disincentivizes good behavior and, you know, good, healthy practices. And I do think, you know, given that COVID breakthrough cases are much milder, you know, that's, we're not, we're not thinking through like, a potential deadly interaction if you get COVID in a way that we were at the beginning. And I also think we know a lot about what's happening with masks and the efficacy of masks, so I don't know that I'm necessarily so worried about total compliance all the time, as long as it's not contentious.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that.
But I, I mean, I think if it's helpful for you all to say, from the select board, you know, here's the penalties, like, you, you know, you get a warning, you don't listen, you get another warning, you get sent home, like, if that's helpful, I'm, I'd be happy to put that in place. But I also think that there's, there can be some sort of mitigation for, you know, if you're in an office all day with somebody else and you're comfortable with that person and, you know, all of that stuff, that's in my mind a little bit different. What I am not comfortable with, however, are meetings between departments or with members of the public where people are not masked.
Yeah, I think we should look at the worrying of what we did earlier, because it was, I was requiring people that came in from the public to work with employees to wear a mask and vice versa.
We used, and back in July of 2020, of course, that was pre-vaccine, and we used a policy of education and enforcement. I know James was involved in that and was a big help in getting, helping us get and be compliant with mask-wearing in the town offices and other places. So, you know, I'm listening to your conversation as much as anything and just trying to digest it and understand it, because it's, it's, there's no right answer per se to this as we've gone through it and the different iterations of what we might require. And as I say, there is a big difference between perceptive or otherwise, between those who are vaccinated and those who are not. And that's just, that's part of what we're living now at this point in time.
The outcomes we're trying to avoid are presenteeism, people coming when they shouldn't come in, and positive cases, right? Those are the outcomes we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, so we're trying, we're trying to avoid, you know, people are going to do what they do in their private life. What we'd like to do is, let's say, somebody tests positive outside, what does that mean if they come to work? It may mean that they have an office by themselves and they don't pass it to anybody, or it may mean, we're not really sure, maybe that's a risk that we're, we'd like to wait and see how the numbers go. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, that we, we have had an increased number of employee cases and wanted to hear what your thoughts would be.
Well, I don't think, so tasking management and, tasking town management with enforcement on top of all this, I think is, is not necessary, because what you do is, you're trying to avoid presenteeism and COVID positive tests, so share that information. So sharing all the data that you've shared in a more public way with the staff, along with per CDC guidelines, per select board recommendation, masks, and then this week, it's this number, this, this is very alarming, and I presume, I don't, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but probably no staff person wants to test positively, like, I mean, are people, is there a natural immunity movement?
I mean, I hope not.
Assuming there's not like a natural immunity movement, people don't, there's a natural stigma to, I'd rather not test positive, therefore, what's the least I can do? Well, and every week you're being presented with, wow, this many in the town, oh, boy, rather than you guys having to add another layer to your tasks, which just, again, it's too much, and it presumes we're dealing with non-adults, so assuming that an adult will respond to, you know, alarming data and do something, do the least they can do.
Yes, I would certainly like to not be the mask police, and I'm sure that Russ would like to not have that as well.
Well, it will be something to resist, it'll be something to push against, rather than, you can't push against data, the data that you presented, you, you know, would somebody deny that? They'd look around and ask if people are in, they're out. So presenting weekly updates of data and this leave policy, it says, we are here for you. Please don't come in if you should not come in, and let's keep numbers down. If you don't know how to do that, the very least, our low bar is going to be mask, so.
Well, that's, that's spot on. It's, so it's not, it's not a, you know, a punishment thing, or it's not something you're going to enforce, but it's like, we're trying to keep you safe, we recognize what the numbers are saying, and so we're going to, you know, if that's what we recommend to you, we're going to, we're going to have this additional leave for you in return to protect yourselves and your colleagues, we just, you know, want you to wear the mask, and it's not a contemplational, right?
The term political, the term safe is too subjective.
Yeah.
The, the guidelines are helpful because they're not enforced, but data, the data of your fellow colleagues, that's pretty indisputable, and it seems that most people do not want to be identified as, you know, positive tests, so enforcement kind of, I think you can, you can trust those things to enforce naturally, I hope.
So we've solicited a lot of different communities, and that is part of the information that you were handed out tonight, so if you want to review that as well, just to give a sense of where other communities are with this particular issue.
This is where they're at now?
Right now, yes. So it's a, it's a pretty wide range of different elements from different communities in the state, and we tried to get as many Seacoast communities as we could. And, you know, you can, you can read that for yourself, but I'll, you know, just pulling out of a few of them, as I said, just, I guess I'll put Rochester on the map here, but they require masks only by staff that have not been vaccinated, no mask required of the public, and no mask required for vaccinated staff. So they have a few vaccinated staff that have started wearing masks again voluntarily, however, there's been no discussion of going back to a masking requirement for the public or for vaccinated staff. So it just gives you an idea of?
I am not in favor of that. I think, you know, I agree with Selectwoman Brown about the, you know, internal piece when we're not dealing directly with the public. I would, I am not going to leave this meeting without putting out a motion that we require masking for any meetings that are interdepartmental inside and with, without meetings with, for the public. So anytime the BRC, the, any town committee that interacts with staff, in fact, any town committee that is meeting on behalf of the town, those members should be masked.
What about just the general public coming into the town office? When somebody go into the town clerk's office, you know, they're behind the window and?
No, I, I, I mean, that is something, I, again, I don't want to, you know, I don't think that we need to have a mask ordinance here in town anymore, like, I think that we know enough about safety measures that work, I think we know enough about transmission, I think we have a very high, not high enough vaccination rate. I, what I do think is that we should model the behavior that we want to see from other people, and that means masking up while indoors when you're not interacting with a person in your immediate household unit.
So you're looking for two things this evening, you're looking for, are you looking for a recommendation or a motion on the leave? And the board may be inclined to make a motion with, at least for meetings and department meetings and board and committee meetings, if I understood you correctly.
Yeah. And I, I do believe that town employees, when they are interacting with the public, should be masked for their own safety as well.
Just what I asked?
For staff safety, right.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know that we should go as far as to require masks in the town offices by members of the public, although I would be, if we want to have that discussion, I'm happy to have that discussion.
Well, maybe I misheard you, but I thought that's what you just said.
That we should require, I, I said that anytime there is a That we should require, I, I said that anytime there is a committee meeting on behalf of the town, that needs to be masked.
Members of staff who are dealing with the public, the staff member needs to have a mask.
Yes.
Okay, I guess.
Mr. Chair, yes, I have a question from Mr. Murray, not to put you on the spot, but is there, between CDC guidelines, um, DHS, are there bodies whose jurisdiction supersedes ours that have guidelines for public interaction or, like, mask guidelines?
Uh, just recommendations. So, we were talking about last year before we implemented our mask mandate. At that time, we had Safe at Home, which were requirements from the state. So, we didn't need to have internal policies just because those state requirements were pushed down. Right now, the CDC does recommend wearing masks where appropriate. I mean, they kind of give it a blanket term, but, um, especially in areas where there is, uh, substantial or high transmission.
What, where are we on that scale?
Substantial.
At least statewide, we're in the substantial.
And what about esthetic?
It's in there, it's in high.
Yeah.
So, that, the CDC guidelines had been mask if you're unvaccinated, has that changed at all, do you know?
Uh, the CDC recommends wearing masks among vaccinated folks as well to further protect from the Delta variant.
So, we could also just, in addition to posting internal data, just have signage that says, per CDC guidelines, wear a mask.
Correct.
I'm just concerned with, let's, you know, distribution of authority and, and let's reference the right, let, reference something else so that we're not taking on everything and re-inventing the wheel. So, that's CDC, DHS, anything from there, or does DHS pretty much?
Pretty much echoes CDC.
Okay.
But yes, that would be in line with CDC recommendations.
Got it. So, we get just to the, the local management thing, if people are seeing local data, what's happening, and then here's the overarching, got federal, got literally town, um, put two and two together. Um, and then for people coming in the building, it's like, it's just sort of reinforcing you're aware that you're, um, there's some guidelines for interaction here. Um, there's no masked police going around because they've got other things to do, but there's a, there's sort of a, a stated decorum here. It's, please do this, and there's some data to back it up if you'd like. It matches at the local and the state level. Because we're the public health body, but that doesn't mean we need to rewrite public health ordinances and laws and policies. There's much more qualified experts doing that. At the granular level, our job is to connect the dots and say, yep, we have local data that matches state data, we have a problem, we definitely have a problem. And then you're presenting, we have another problem, which is, that problem could be getting bigger. So, that problem can get bigger if we poke the box in a number of ways or just leave it alone. So, it's like, okay, how do we be strategic about this and just, you know, remind people of that thing that's out there that's very convenient? And then also remind them of this new thing that is the most pressing and pertinent, you know, that's, it's serious. We can't, this is not about preference, it's not about any interpretation of things. Here's some data, here's some numbers that we're, that people have created these numbers. We've gotta do something and it's gotta be, um, it's governance, it's, it's, um, it's gotta be an umbrella, uh, effort that is not open to interpretation, you know? So, that's it. I'll stop.
Well said.
Thank you, Selectman Brown. So, Mr. Dean, do you, circling back to the leave, do you want something from us tonight? Do you want to write up a proposal, um, where the funding would come from to present to us next week? Or how do you want to handle, or are you looking for something to be decided this evening?
Um, if you can adopt the, uh, if you're okay with the, uh, draft policy on temporary leave due to COVID-19, if you, you could endorse that, that would be good.
Okay, do you, would you like a motion or just a endorse?
I think a motion would be great.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion, uh, for the extra Select Board to endorse the emergency COVID leave proposed draft as submitted this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes. And then, uh, Selectwoman Cowan, did you want to make a motion?
Wait, before I do that, um, uh, Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy, if you can think about the childcare issue, because I know that's coming up with some people my husband works with, um, that they have, he's a union guy. Um, but he's gotta work out, have the same idea about leave when it's not the person that works here that has a problem, that the daycare center's closed. And so, their kids are home and there's no one to care for them. So, I don't have an answer to that. And my husband's been arguing about it since, I don't know, a year ago, February. So, um, just, you know, think about it.
Yeah, I...
Come up with any idea, I'll let you know.
As you all know, I have three children, I was, I was in the same boat. So, uh, Russ and I can talk about it. I'm not sure what our capacity will be, but maybe it's on a case-by-case basis or, or something like that. I, I really, we, we sort of stuck to just COVID-positive, um, employee or, or household contact, but we can certainly talk more if you'd like.
It's understandable. And thank you, Selectwoman Cowan.
Do you all need something that says we have to have, uh, employees and members of town committees and interdepartmental meetings be masked?
I'm gonna let Russ answer that, what he would like.
Yeah, I think a, I think a statement to that effect would be of value.
Okay.
Because we, again, and I'm not asking, you know, um, we can, I don't know when your next meeting, and if this is too fast, you can see what the cases are if you'd like to wait. I don't, I don't know where, no, I'm seeing, no, okay.
I would not, no, I don't think we should wait either. Um, so I would make a motion to require interdepartmental meetings, um, meetings to conduct town business with citizens, who, whomever, you know, contractors, bidders, whatever it is. And, um, town committee meetings that are held on town property in town, in-town property to be masked, per, uh, per CDC guidelines, per transmission rates.
Second.
Effective immediately. Does that carve you out, do you think, Chief? For what, for what you all need?
You're excluding the...
Yeah, I, I, I think it does. I'm in, in discussions with Melissa today, uh, and I applaud you for taking action tonight because by Friday, all but perhaps the one most recent case, all the employees are out of their 10-day window.
Yeah.
So, to, to kind of quote you, sir, this is either gonna get better because it was a blip, or this is just the tip of the iceberg and it's gonna get worse. So, if, in my, in my business, I plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Right.
Um, so if we can plan for the worst and say, it's likely gonna get worse, you've taken a great step forward, kind of putting this out there. And no, I, I don't think it at all affects the way we're gonna do business. And again, we've, we've kind of worked this way for months.
All right, motion stands. Thanks, Chief.
And I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just really quickly, we don't have to have an end date. Like, I imagine this can be, do you have, what's, what's your...
Sure, so the COVID leave policy as it stands right now, the leave policy goes until February 28th, 2022. Um, we can, uh, how would you like, do you want to, month by month? Do you want to go to February? What, what would you like to do?
I think this motion should maybe stand through the end of the year? Or is that too soon?
I do, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have it extend and expire with the, um, the COVID leave policy because at least that will be a trigger for re-upping and having this conversation again.
Okay, I was more of the month-to-month, just so that you could base it off of numbers. Because then you don't, you don't, you don't want to lock yourself in.
Right.
And based on what other, like, schools and other small businesses do is that I think they base it off of, okay, the holidays are coming.
Right.
So, we're gonna implement the mask policy for the next month because we know people are traveling and you're, you're outside of your home base and then we'll revisit once, you know, people are back and we can maybe do some pool testing and then make, so I, I say that only to allow the flexibility because February, when you say February, it can feel like, oh, my God, February. But if you say month-to-month, then it has a very different...
No, I agree.
...context and, you know, sort of, people might buy in a little easier to it and it might be a little less, uh, pushback, perhaps.
So, to Russ's point, the end of the year is essentially like six weeks. So, it'd be the two weeks to the end of this month and then December, if you wanted to do sort of whatever the...
I really like what you're saying there because I was thinking the same thing. Um, so I, but my question is, can we, if, if the motion stood through February as a board, if the numbers all of a sudden, if this is just a blip and, and 30 days, the numbers are back to, you know, where they were, we as a board can come back and, and revisit it. They could. Because what I'm afraid of, um, and, and though I, I agreed with Selectwoman Rontrioloff, looking at the fact that holidays are coming up, people are going to be presumably with families, particularly after, some may not have been with them last year, they've been vaccinated. As a board, we also have to look at when we're meeting. So, if we put an end date as December 31st, it's right around New Year's and we don't meet again, um, so I would be...
And then there's deliberations.
Deliber, you have the budget hearing in January deliberation session. I totally agree with you, but I think if we have the ability to, as a board, meet during a meeting and revisit it and then maybe remove it, I'd be more comfortable doing the end of February, knowing that we have the ability. Is that reasonable to the board?
It's reasonable to me. I don't, I'm not here every day. I mean, that's the, that's the honest truth, right? I'm not here every day, so I don't have to, it's easy for me to say yes when I come in once or twice a week for an hour or two meeting.
I think we can also report back to you on, on the reception of it. I, I mean, like Russ said, there's not going to be some people that are not going to be happy and there are going to be some people that are very happy. And we can certainly give you some status reports on how things are going if that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I do think, I mean, I want to be really clear about the masked police while people are in their own office. Like, that is not something that I think any of us are interested in doing.
Right, me either.
But I do think that we can proactively protect our, you know, taxpayer dollars. Um, if people get really sick from COVID, that impacts a lot of things. Um, and also, you know, set a standard that we want to, we want to and take people's concerns seriously and want to stop the spread of COVID.
So, I'll go ahead.
Sorry, and, sorry, last thing. So, I would absolutely push, and not to break it up, but in terms of external folks coming in for meetings with people who work in the building, I, I think that's a policy that should just stand until we really have whatever COVID-under-control means.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think that's, that's nearly as problematic as the every-day, all-day-at-work kind of thing where you feel like you're already in your bubble of people you work with. So, if, if it comes to the point where we're having to, you know, renew the conversation or figure out what to do, I would be happy to say, during board meetings, committee meetings, if you're, this is not your office space, you, you know...
You wear a mask.
Yeah, everyone has to wear a mask and that's it.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, did your motion have that date in February?
Um, it can. Yes. Until, uh, February 28th, 2022.
And you're, you seconded, I think.
Well, amend my second.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, amended second. Any further, thank you for that, Selectwoman Rontrioloff. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Thank you for your, all of your hard work, both of you, uh, over the weekend. Okay, um, moving on, we have our second reading of the outdoor dining ordinance. And, uh, I do need to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second it. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is open. And there are no members of the public, so I will then ask a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And the third reading, Mr. Dean, will be next week?
Next week, yes.
Great, thank you. And the ADA policy was updated to reflect that. Um, the ADA coordinator, uh, will move to be, uh, Mr. Doug Eastman, our Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer, who will be, uh, assuming that from Chief Pullen. Anything to add, Mr. Dean?
Just that, uh, the policy actually, uh, had Rich Kane, our former police chief, as the ADA coordinator, and then Stefan's name got plugged in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but since that time, we've appointed Doug to be the, uh, ADA coordinator, so...
It makes much more sense.
It does.
Yeah, this is just updating the policy to reflect that.
Okay. Do you need a motion from the board or just an update?
I just need a, a motion to the board to adopt the amended policy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the amended policy for policy numbers 00-24 grievances under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. And let's see, jumping into regular business, um, Madam Clerk, I think we had a couple.
Yes.
An abatement and a solar exemption.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 94 Lot 1 in the amount of $7,000 for the tax year 2022.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 64 Lot 105, Unit 53, in the amount of $250, uh, for the tax year 2021.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. And then we have, Mr. Dean, a real estate tax request on interest, correct?
Right, this is an interest waiver that's been requested based on a bill not being delivered to the applicant. Basically, there was a property change of hands and the people that had the, that bought the property never received a tax bill. And so, they're requesting a, a waiver of the interest due on their bill now. They're getting the bill now, but they didn't get the first half bill.
And what's the total on the interest?
Uh, $68.30.
Okay. And was the, um, applicant invited to this evening's meeting?
Um, I don't know if we've actually invited them to come in.
All right.
On this one.
Questions from the board? Okay, and, and the applicant is paying the, um, the regular tax bill?
Yes.
Okay. And I would open this to the board if anybody would like to make a motion to waive the interest requested.
Um, I'll move that we waive the interest requested, um, of $68.30.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. I think that's it, right? Mr. Dean? Permits and approvals, so Town Manager's report, please.
Uh, there was a letter in the packet, actually, under permits and approvals from the Tonry Farm.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
The Christmas tree signs, the ones on the end of Route 88. They're looking to have that signed through, uh, from November 24th through December 24th.
No, I saw that, it's right here, I'm sorry, I missed that. And this is, this is approved annually, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would enter, did you want to make a...
I can do the motion.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a, um, sign-location request from Tonry Christmas Trees at the end of Route 88 for the period of November 24th through December 24th, 2021.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Mr. Dean?
Okay, uh, one thing I wanted to report on with the board was the Omni-ballot demonstration that we had today. We've actually had two, uh, Omni-ballot is a system that helps with our visually impaired residents and we're looking to use some of the surplus from the elections budget. We have about $4,500 and the system costs about... We have about $4,500 and the system costs about that much to get going. But it was very well received by residents Gene Shiner and Dana Trahan and Fred Fornier were the ones that were helping us go through that process. So just wanted to alert the board to it and we think it'll be a big improvement. It seems like everybody's on board with making the, making the purchase, so.
Wonderful.
Like to do that with, like I said, the funds we have that are left over in this year's elections budget will cover the upfront cost. And then there are some annual costs after that that equate to about $1,000 for the first five years. And then after that, it, it does go up a little bit after that to about 1,500 a year. So there have been a lot of people involved in that, Kate Miller, our town moderator, as well as my assistant Pam and, and others, IT department and so forth. So we've had quite a few people involved in that, in that process. So that's that. And then there is a town hall survey that the Arts and Culture Commission commissioned. And I met with Tony Calandrello from the Arts and Culture Commission about a capital reserve fund for town hall improvements. So I'm actually coordinating a time when Tony can come into the board and meet, meet with you and describe that in a little bit more detail, but it's just a little bit of a warrant preview item.
Okay.
That is something that we, we would be looking to have on the warrant as well as a, an article that would amend the agents to expend from the old Exeter Arts Committee over to the Arts and Culture Commission for the new trust, for the donations and trust fund that is already existing. So just shifting the authority there to, to spend money. So that's coming up. We're also getting the word out about Zoom and committee, committee members. We've sent a couple of emails out to different committees because we're seeing that certain committees are having people Zoom into meetings. And one of the things that has to happen, that there has to be a physical, a quorum of the body physically has, has to be present in the meeting location. But if there is somebody that's Zooming in and is a committee member, then that automatically triggers the requirements that all the votes be roll call at the meeting and that the person who is Zooming in has to actually say that they weren't, it wasn't reasonably practical for them to be at the meeting. So that's just, we're just trying to get the word out to different committees about that. So when, if they are having people Zoom into their meetings and they're committee members, that they go through that process because that's a 90, a 91A compliance issue. Then there are two Budget Recommendations Committee meetings this week, Tuesday and Thursday. So tomorrow night is Water Sewer and then Thursday night is CIP. And we call it wrap up, we'll see what happens, but we'll see whomever can make those meetings there. And then the other thing that's happening on my end is the Community Power Aggregation Committee. I did get a chance to sit and meet with them last week, going over the community power plan they're pursuing and that they're planning on having two public hearings. One is on November 29th and the other is on December 13th. And, and then the board will likely see a presentation on that and an effort to put that community power plan onto the town warrant. So you'll be hearing more about that in the not too distant future.
Thank you for reporting that, so I don't have to. I just wanted to add on for the Energy Committee, also talking about community power is Wednesday, the 17th, at 7:00 PM is a Q and A with various people, Unitil, Clean Power Coalition, it's moderated by our town planner. And it's on the Energy Committee's website and you can look at the flyer and do a Zoom call in for questions once you hear the presentation. There's already been a presentation pre-filmed and our last meeting pretty much covered it, but to add on to your thing.
And that was my report.
Thank you. I'm really happy that that presentation went well today.
Yes.
I remember sitting in with you on the first meeting when they came in sometime in the summer, I think, right?
Yeah, and it was really interesting to get the, the, what happened was, we sent them over the town ballot because there has been a lot of conversation about will the town ballot actually work with the system? And they were able to put the town ballot onto their system and demonstrate it for us.
That's exciting.
And the voice activation on it was actually really good and accurate, so.
Terrific.
Makes us feel good and positive about having the system.
Good, thank you. Select Board Committee reports, I'll start down here, select woman, Ratriola.
I had a Arts and Culture Committee meeting on Tuesday, Tuesday? Yeah. On Tuesday and like Russ mentioned in the conversation about Tony coming in to update about the interest in the warrant that he had discussed with, with Russ. So they're going to do that, I don't know if he'd scheduled a time to come in yet, but.
Not yet, we're working on that. I think maybe the first week in December.
And then also a follow-up to the update that you got from Parks and Rec about the, the money that they brought in, was it $20,000? And then just further discussion about the interest in Swayze when it comes to arts and culture and some of the thoughts that they had. There was also a meeting on Friday from the Housing Committee meeting. I wasn't there, I was traveling for that. And then they have another meeting coming up this Friday as well. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Select woman Cowan?
Plan Board meeting was canceled this past week, or two weeks, two weeks ago, so we have one this coming Thursday.
Fifteen minute long one because the HDC has the same room at 7:15.
Well, that is good in terms of childcare purpose.
You can bring them along.
Select woman Gilman?
Oh, yes, I have many, many things. To follow up on the Energy Committee, there's also a trifold, which I don't know is, where it's going to be distributed, but you can find it on the Energy Committee's website. And it discusses the community power aggregation a little bit more, gives you a visual to look at to see how it's going to work out. And gives it a definition for people that haven't been following what we've been doing. Let's see, the Facilities Committee met and it was my first meeting with them, Russ, you were there, correct?
Yes.
And so a lot of things happened fast, but one of the things that came out of it was doing the, moving up the Facilities Conditions Assessment to a higher priority. And I believe that we thought of that putting the ADA study into that was, was part of that?
Yes.
Having being a separate thing. So that was that one. Hold on. The Heritage Commission has been very busy. We had several demolition reviews. One was for property owned by the Academy at 8 Gilman Lane. It's 35 High Street is the one on, right at the end of Portsmouth Avenue. And the house that they're, they want, they requested a demolition review is behind it. The commission said that it was okay for demolition, but they want it, but we asked for them to preserve as much usable material as possible to use without, in the site. But also to ask for a kind of mitigating thing like a plaque or sign that talks about the history of the building because although we found it had been so changed over the year that you couldn't really see much of the, the old original building, it still was a prominent family that owned the building and, or was given, it was given as a wedding present from one family across the street to the other, to the daughter. So these are things that are important to know about and once the house is gone, will be, will last, will be lost on, you know, physically. So the Academy was very good about working with the Heritage Commission on those kind of things, as they did with the Thompson Cage and something else. Also, the Demolition Review Committee went to look at 43 Front Street, which is the Baptist And they are planning to make some big changes to the roof. I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know what the outcome was yet, but I'm sure we'll be talking about it on the 17th, Wednesday, the 17th. And the drawings, I don't believe, are posted on the website, but I'll see that they get posted so that people, there's a three dimensional views of, of the building and what the proposed changes are that I think a lot of people would be interested in seeing. And then what else am I doing? I talked about that one, sorry, I got a bazillion windows open because I did a lot of stuff. The Historic District Commission is hearing, just passed a window replacement on the Burlingame Block down on Water Street, hoping for the rear, hoping that it will be the test case for the type of window for the rest of the units. It's a condominium, so we could only approve the seven windows and we'll see if the rest go along. This week on Thursday, as I said, at 7:15, the HDC is, will be considering the Academy's proposed project for that same site of 35 High Street, Nate Gilman Lane, for new housing that they're proposing. I'm getting, I'm getting there. The Recreation Advisory Board, we did meet and talk about Park Street Common and I was asked about it later, why it wasn't publicly noticed, but it was just a regular meeting. And the committee, what the committee ended up doing was taking, Parks and Rec took the suggestions from the public meetings that they had and put them before four different designer manufacturers. And they came back with four for the committee to look at. The committee knocked out the wicked expensive one and the one that was only for kids under elementary school age. So there are two left to make a decision on. And if people want to have more input, you know, email Mr. Bisson, our director, or come to the next meeting, which is the 30th, at 6 o'clock. At 7 o'clock on the 30th, the Parks and Recreation Department is doing a presentation on 10 Hampton Road and that will be here. So the, the 6 o'clock meeting is at Parks and Rec's building and then the 7 o'clock meeting is here. Wait, there's the one more? No, I think that's it. That's the end.
Terrific, thank you. You had a busy two weeks.
I got a busy week. The next two, yeah.
Select woman Brown?
I had a few meetings, the first Conservation Commission meeting, Rose Farm was the main topic there. They came presenting their primary and alternate plans, a lot of residents voiced their concerns about what things, where to define, a lot of criteria for that.
I threw you in it, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah, really, three hours, three hours. I guess they did conserve everything but time, right? And then a resident came asking for an easement. And it just, oh, sorry, thank you, sorry about that. I am not loud enough. So Conservation Commission, Rose Farm was the main issue, and then a resident came requesting an easement from the Conservation Commission. That's not the place to do that, right? The commission handed it over, said the board, select board would be the ones to do that. Just wanted to double confirm, okay.
He actually reached out to me today, so he'll be coming before the select.
Okay, cool. And then Communications Committee was very brief, they're looking for a little bit more direction as to how to, where the next best course of action is, whether it's creating more accessible content, print or TV, but, so that's the, the thing on deck right now. That's it.
Thank you very much. I attended the Police and Fire BRC Subcommittee meeting and I watched the Parks and Rec Library BRC meeting on TV. River Advisory meets this Thursday, so.
Can I just bring up one thing, Mr. Chair? I had this, this conversation came up with Mr. Dean from, I forget how the conversation started, but I know how it was, the Arts Committee and the Energy Committee have two interests in the same area. Arts and Culture wants to air condition and do the heating, air conditioning, et cetera of the town hall. That's one of the things that Mr. Dean spoke to Mr. Calandrello about. The Energy Committee going along with that, whether it's nation to make that effective, has already planned and gotten prices, price quotes from and are just about to get a contract together for insulating the attic of the town hall. And what that brought up to me is that we have, as you've noted, and I think we've all noted, way too many committees that are discussing similar yet different things. And we're not communicating between them and Communications Committee. And I had, I thought about this and of course didn't do anything about it, had some family issues come up. A couple of years ago, we had talked about, instead of the selectmen just listing off the things that they did, writing a little something that goes in the packet for what happened since the last meeting. And it doesn't have to be like a paragraph or whatever, it's just two lines, this is what we voted on, whatever is most important to you. And I think in doing so, we can come back to each other's committees and say, you know, it's a matter of concern for that committee. You know, because I was trying to think when, when the Sustainability Committee was established, it was going to be the Energy Sustainability Committee. But we all decided that really their directions were, while coincidental, were pointed in different directions. And that sustainability was about not just saving energy. So that's an example of what, where we cross paths. We have to know what each one is doing, but we're not, and, and some of that is our role as representatives on each board committee, so. So I'll write something for our next meeting and if you can, as an example.
Thank you. Correspondence, we received the 2021 Rockingham County warrant. The amount of the warrant this year is $2,081,903. And Mr. Dean, did you have anything further to add to that or?
No, this is the standard county warrant that we get every year. It's a tax warrant and we need to pay it by the date on the top of the correspondence.
Thank you. Also in our packet is just a, a list of important dates between now and town meeting statewide to consider. There's a copy of the Rockingham County Recovery Plan State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Report, 2021. We have something from Eversource, copy of a petition for a license to construct and maintain electric lines over and across state lands in Exeter and Brenwood. And before we get to the last piece of correspondence, it's under correspondence, I also want to acknowledge that we had several emails sent that were part of our added packet today regarding Swayze Park and the roadway. The last piece of correspondence was an email that was written to me by the Chair of the Police Stakeholders Commission, Ann Sermon, and also copied Chief Poulain. And essentially, the, the Stakeholders Commission had a formal posted meeting, was it last, last week or two weeks ago? And they were not able to formally conduct the meeting because they didn't have a quorum. And after discussion amongst the board, the commission members that were there and, and also between the Chair and Chief Poulain, they are recommending to the select board that we dissolve the commission at this time and that they continue meeting through community meetings with Chief Poulain, the members of the Police Department, having coffee, would meet, meet the chief, meet the, the other members of the department. So again, that is from Chair Ann Sermon on behalf of the Police Stakeholders Commission requesting the board consider dissolving the commission at this time. So I'll open up to comment.
Didn't we have a time limit on that anyway?
I think they were.
Yeah, I think they were.
They came, they came before the board when we were still on Zoom, so it must have been the end of May, early June. And I think at that point, I think I asked what next steps were and they didn't have an answer.
That's right.
And then they decided, what, several weeks ago to post a meeting? And I think it was more just to, I mean, I was never really clear on why they were, I mean, I don't know if you, or.
No.
Select woman Brown can.
I don't know why, I'm not sure why they did either. I suspect they didn't have a quorum because we, you know, if you don't regularly check the town website, I don't know that you would have known that there was a meeting. But I, I, you know, I think that they did some good work. I think that there's more work to do, but maybe not within the purview of this committee. And so I totally agree that they should close up.
So why don't we entertain a motion then to effectively immediately dissolve? to effective immediately dissolve the Police Stakeholders Commission at this time? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and I want to thank all the members of the commission and respective staff and guests that. Not commission. Can't call it a commission.
Commissions are legal entities.
Yeah. Okay, reviewing the board calendar, we meet again next week, November 22nd, and then in December, it's December 6th and December 20th. Hi, Chief Wilken.
Public comment at the end?
Please.
Just a little FYI, you might have seen the Exeter Christmas elves or holiday elves out decorating already several weekends. We'll be wrapping up soon, hopefully before Thanksgiving. But just so we all know ahead of time, the Seagraves fire apparatus that typically has in the past taken the board around is not available this year. So if you plan on participating in the holiday parade on the 4th, have your hiking shoes, because you can march with the cool kids up front. We'll all be up there. So I didn't want any surprises, looking for that engine, going, where is it?
When have we ever done that?
You haven't.
We didn't let you ride?
No, I started.
I was just going to say, Chief, I mean, I walked.
I know, I lost that thing.
Remember how cold it was two years ago?
Then it will not be a departure from the past. We'll join you there.
Got people excited about something.
It happened twice, because the first year, I got to the starting line, and none of the other selectmen were there.
Oh, were they hiding in the truck?
No, they weren't. I said, I'm not going to walk alone. Give me a lift.
Oh, I see.
She put me on the truck, so then the next year it was a thing.
Oh, I see.
And then somebody else grabbed it first, the following year, so.
Well, it was, it was very cold in 2019.
I remember.
Didn't the parade, it also started late, too, right? Because I remember, I just remember standing there for. Thank you for that, though, Chief. Appreciate it. Any other comments or anything from the board? Seeing none?
Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion stands, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.